Good evening and welcome to the Zoning Board of Appeals. Tonight's meeting is being video recorded and broadcast live on Penfield TV's Government Access Channel, which includes Spectrum Cable 1303, online at penfieldtv.org, and social media platforms, Facebook, YouTube, and by the Town of Penfield Television. Following the proceedings, the video recording will be available on the town's website and on streaming devices Roku, Apple TV, Amazon Fire. Just simply search Penfield TV in your device app store, and the best part, it's free. If you wish to address the board regarding any public hearing matter, public participation opportunities will be provided throughout the applications. The presentations and comments, questions from this board. For those watching this meeting live, you can participate by phone at (585) 340-8771, or by electronic submission via penfield.org/liveTV. Your involvement is valuable, and we encourage any participation in these proceedings. Tonight, we're going to do, we're going to have a few sessions. We're going to have our tabled matters. We've got some administrative work session that we have to deal with at the beginning, and then we'll get into the actual public applications tonight. But if you would first please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's start with approval of the minutes from the February 15th, 2024 meeting.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Matt. Perfect, seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Perfect. And then on to our work session items. Tonight, we've got a couple pieces that are going to be, basically they're administrative conditional use reviews. And so for those here in the audience, what that means is staff has determined that it's like a small item, like let's say a pizza shop is moving out and a new pizza shop is moving in, or a restaurant, something very similar to the use of what it was. And so it helps streamline that, cut out all of this for the applicants. Staff can do that internally upstairs, and then we don't have to go through a public hearing, because they're so identical to what they were before. So that's just one way we're trying to streamline that a little bit. We've got two of those tonight, Andy. I think one is the Old Pueblo Grill, and I think the other one's going to be a pizza place as well. So if you want to, just go ahead and read those first ones for us, and then we'll move them.
Sure. So the first one is on the screen, you can see Witchcraft Brews. This is an old photo, but it was most recently the Don Pedro Cantina, which was a Mexican restaurant. There is a new restaurant, Old Pueblo Grill, that is proposing to operate out of the same No significant changes in the scope of operation, other than their hours are changing slightly. They're going to be open until 10:00 PM on Friday and Saturday, as opposed to 9:00 PM for the former restaurant. Just some minor interior renovations and a new sign to identify the business.
Perfect, thank you. I'll take a motion to move this to administrative conditional review.
Motion to approve.
Okay, by Matt.
Second.
Second, second by Laura. Any questions? Any comments? Nope? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
And the second one, please.
Do we have to do seeker on that?
No.
No.
Okay, I'm going to go move along right down the street here. So the second one, this shows Napa Wood Fired Pizza, which was actually, again, this is an old photo. It was most recently, and is still, Ferrari Pizza Bar. That business is being taken over by a new owner. Again, they're going to be doing some minor cosmetic changes, a new sign, but no significant changes in the scope of operation.
Perfect, thank you. I'll take a motion to move that to conditional use review.
I'll make the motion to move that to conditional review.
Perfect. Motion second?
I will second it.
Second, thank you. Any comments, questions? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, that passes. And on to tabled items. I think we have two still tabled, Andy?
Yes.
Looks like, okay. For the first one, where are we standing right now? I think the applicant sent an email or some kind of correspondence to us?
She did. So the board tabled this application, requested that the owner address some concerns, one being talking to the neighbor to see how they feel about the variance, and also getting an estimate to possibly relocate the shed, which she did. And I'm, I can pull up the letter that she sent that's addressing those items here.
I believe she, what, quoted those, quoted around $600 or so to move the shed over a few feet?
Yep.
The neighbor is no longer living there, and the house is going up for sale, so there's nobody for her to even contact.
Yeah.
So there's really no neighbor, and at this point, there's also, this was tabled back in January's meeting, right?
January is when she originally appeared, yes.
So there's been no other correspondence from any other neighbors. There was a neighbor at that meeting who was in support, if I recall. And then we'd asked to get the estimate to move the shed, $600, which is probably the same cost of the shed itself.
Probably.
And then further in the letter, I think she talks about just the inconvenience of, in addition to moving it, if it was free to move, there would still be other issues with placing it outside of where it is right now. So at this point, I'm satisfied with the additional information that was provided, and I would make a motion to go ahead and make a decision on that tonight.
Everyone?
I think we still have to do seeker on this?
Correct.
Yep. So why don't we start there? So the type two action pursuant to seeker, requiring nothing further.
Okay, I got a second?
Second.
Okay, second by Matt. Any comments, questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, and on to the merits.
All right, so I'm going to make a motion to approve based on, you know, is this an undesirable change to the character of the neighborhood? No, there's other sheds in the area. You know, it was constructed, it is currently standing, it was constructed to keep with consistency. Mr. Spring was the neighbor who appeared on the January 18th meeting and was in support of the requested variance. As far as can this be, can this benefit be sought by a different method? It could have been, maybe if she had come before she placed the shed, but at this point, it's a pretty considerable financial burden to move the shed. The request is substantial. It's a 90% variance request. It does not present any adverse impact to the physical conditions or the environmental conditions of the neighborhood. And yes, it is self-created, as most of these requests are self-created. This one in particular, she had relied on the advice of the contractor, but still self-created. So as I said, I make a motion to approve.
Perfect, I get a second?
I'll second.
Okay, seconded. Any comments, questions?
No.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Perfect, thank you.
And then the conditions, or?
Yeah, if we could go through the conditions.
So the conditions of the request here, the variance, is that the shed is approved with a variance of nine foot from the minimum 10-foot setback required by the code. It's, the applicant shall obtain a building permit for the storage shed, and that's something that can be obtained by the Penfield Building and Zoning Department. And then obviously, there's the fees that are associated with that. The applicant should also obtain a certificate of compliance, and that she will also comply with all of the applicable requirements specific to the New York State Uniform Fire Prevention and Building Code. Good?
Yes.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Good.
Thank you. Okay, and then we've got-
Andy's so happy right now.
We've got one more tabled. I think that was the public storage that was in here, and I think we wanted to give it some time to go back and review all the clauses and legal part of their agreement to be there, before they bought the property.
And the conditions that were granted.
To make sure that they were still in agreement with that prior to moving forward.
Right, and they did contact us recently to request that it be continued tabled to the next meeting.
Okay, I'll get a motion for that.
A motion to table it, second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And then let's move on to the public hearings tonight. Andy, if you would read the first one, please.
Kevin Schumacher, American Promotional Events, 4003 Helton Drive, Florence, Alabama, 35630. Requests a recommendation of approval for the issuance of an intolerant vendor license under Section 162-6-E1B and Section 162-E2 of the code to allow the sales of sparkling devices at 1990 Brant Point Drive. The property is currently or formerly owned by DeMarco Brant Point LLC and is owned general business. SBL number 093.02-1-25.11. This is application number 24Z-0007.
And before we get going, I do want to remind everyone watching at home, if you do want to call in, it's (340) 8771, or online at penfield.org. Who's got the?
So if you could state your name and your address for the record, please?
My name is Amanda Gump, and it's 35208 State Route 126, Carthage, New York.
Excellent. Well, it was a thorough application, so I appreciate it. We're going to walk you through a couple of questions. I've kind of preliminarily, because this is a repeat setup, have, was able to fill out a good portion of it, but there'll be a couple of additional questions I'll get some input from you on as well. So basically, you're going to be setting up the similar setup to what you've had in the past. Same safety features will be in place, same insurance of noise reduction, like, no ongoing lights added outside the building or the tent. Let's go through here now, real quick. So will the proposed create any risk of danger to persons or property? I indicated this was a no, because you have set this up previously, and you have a proven safety record. Anything you'd like to add to that?
It has been safe in the past, and we do continue to do so.
Excellent. Will it create any, will it create any increased vehicle traffic, or interfere in any manner, any of the, of coming or going for pedestrians? I indicated no, because there's more than sufficient adequate parking in that area, that where it's being placed in the parking lot as well, away from any of the other establishments, so it shouldn't impact either vehicle or foot traffic. Would you agree with that? Any issues? Okay. Will the proposed have any detrimental effect on the adjacent properties, or interfere with the lawful enjoyment of the adjacent properties? No, again, you have set this up before, and this is temporary, so this will come up, it'll be used for that brief period of time, that it'll be, and then be taken back down again. Will it create any noise or litter? The applicant in the past has ensured that the trash would be removed, and that there would be no noise created, other than the normal coming and going of the transactions of the purchases. Anything additional that you would want to, where any lights or music being played, or anything like that?
No, we're going to keep the lights only to the inside of the tent, if necessary, you know, in the evenings, if it does happen to, for example, storm, and we need to have some kind of light in there for safety purposes. But other than that, nothing additional.
Gotcha. Okay, did anybody else on the board have any questions?
No.
No.
How long have you been, and doing this at this location? It's several years now, right?
I believe we're at six years.
Six years now? Okay, so pretty good track record so far.
Yep.
And never, Andy, never any issues?
I'm not, I'm more of, no.
Got you. So Andy, should I go through the conditions now, or should we do seeker first?
Seeker is-
Go through seeker, and then the conditions will be part of your motion.
Got you. Okay, so this is a type two seeker, I believe, and requiring no additional?
Further review.
Further review.
I get a second?
Second.
Okay, second. Any comments, questions? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, so I would recommend approval for this, based on the fact that it's been set up several years, ongoing without any challenges, but there are a few conditions that I'm going to read through now, so that we're in agreement with the applicant as to the setup. You are permitted to erect a 30-by-40-foot tent on the subject property and sell sparkling devices, as defined in Part 225 of Title IX of the New York C.R.R., within such a tent from June 20th, 2024, through July 5th, 2024. The applicant shall obtain a tent permit from the Penfield Fire Marshal and pay the appropriate fee. The applicant shall obtain an intolerant vendor license from the Penfield Town Clerk and pay the appropriate fee. And the applicant is permitted to display the following signage during the sales event, the TNT bunting display, the tables within the tent identified as signed 7304731, and the tent signage placement rendering. One tent, one TNT fireworks sign on each of the four sides of the tent that would identify the sign as 730474, and the tent signage placement rendering provided by the applicant. So you did provide us with a layout of where you'd put the sign, so you will adhere to that rendering. And one additional sign in each roadway entrance into the Baytown Plaza, identified as site seven, assigned 730411E. That's also indicated on the signage. And there'll be no additional signage, other than what's already been indicated here?
Yes, sir.
Excellent, okay. No other types of off-site or onsite signage associated with the event is permitted, okay. The applicant shall comply with the applicable requirements of the New York State Uniform Fire Prevention and Building Code, the New York State Energy Conservation Construction Code, and the Penfield Town Code, and any other applicable county, state, or federal requirements.
Yes, sir.
Got you. And there's one additional one that I did put on here. The applicant will adhere to all additional, all other conditions previously agreed to on the setup. So there were some additional other ones, Andy, I'm assuming you can pull those from the previous and add them. Okay, excellent. So with all that, it's, yeah, I think it's good to have these businesses. It allows the folks to enjoy the holiday of the Fourth of July, and based on all that, and of course, we want to, I would recommend approval.
Second.
Okay. Any comments, questions? Okay. Any comments or questions from the audience? Nope. Okay, I see no one online, or waiting on the phone. I guess we'll call vote? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, it passes.
Good luck.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Did you drive all the way from Carthage for this?
I did.
Wow.
Yeah, I hope to see you in the next couple of months as well, for another location.
Excellent.
We'll see you soon. Thank you very much.
Thanks. Okay, Andy, if you would read the next application, please.
Gary and Linda Jones, 135 Farm Brook Drive, Rochester, New York, 14625. Request approval for an area variance under Section 250-14.3 of the code to allow an accessory storage building with less setback than required under Section 250-5.1-F1 of the code at 135 Farm Brook Drive. The property is currently or formerly owned by Gary and Linda Jones, and is owned R-1-20, SBL number 123.11-1-35. This is application number 24Z-0008.
Excellent. Good evening. If we can just get your names and address for the record, please?
Yes, Linda Jones, 135 Farm Brook Drive.
Thank you.
Gary Jones, 135 Farm Brook Drive.
Excellent. Okay, so you guys are here tonight, talking about a shed. It sounds like there's been a shed there for a long, long time, and you guys went to replace it, and then come to find out, it's, there's never been a building permit, it's never, it was never there originally before officially, and so we're trying to take care of all that tonight, so make sure you guys are on the up and up.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. So it looks like, from what I see in the application, shed's been there for, I guess, 30-plus years, from what we could tell. You're looking to basically keep it where it is, for the one that you replaced that was there already. No real issues from the neighbors, from what I could understand. In fact, I believe you have, you sent 11 letters from neighbors, from neighboring properties in support. 12, I guess we have a new one, 12.
By the way, congratulations on the new record.
Yeah, that might be, that might be a record of support from the neighborhood. So that's good, that's good. Really, it's not a very large shed, it's a 49-square-foot shed, so it's a 7-by-7 shed, and there's been no issues in the past 30 years, based on even what your neighbors were saying. You guys keep your property very nice, and based on that, the layout of the land, and it looks like there's some wet areas in the back, that it really limits where you can put the shed. Is that correct?
Well, we're limited. That wet area that you saw there was due to the neighbor emptying out his pool every year. So that's why we can't move it forward, you know, and put it on that concrete pad, because it'll be filled with water.
It'll be filled with water, correct?
And as you can see how steep it is behind us, and even our backyard is, there's, it's a more gentle slope, but that, what you see there on that slope, that's what we have to-
Right.
-get behind us.
Right.
We're really limited on where to put it, and there's a, it's on a concrete pad.
Right, and that helps keep it up and keep it out of the water, from the moisture in the area as well. Okay, all right. I don't have any further questions. Does anyone else here have questions? Anyone in the audience care to speak on this matter? Let me see if there's anyone online or on the phone. I see nobody. In the future, if anyone does want to call in, (340) 8771, or penfield.org.
And is that free?
That's free. We don't have a collect number yet. Okay.
Dan's going to regret not being here.
Nothing further here, so I'm going to move forward with seeker. I'm going to declare this a type two action pursuant to seeker, requiring no further review.
Second.
Second by George. Any comments, questions?
No.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and then on to the merits. I'm going to move to approve this application. This, I mean, there's been a shed there for 30-some years, without any, you know, substantial, you know, undesirable changes to the neighborhood. The neighbors were in support of this. We have received many letters saying that it would be in character, because it's always been there. Could the applicant have found some other way? I mean, I guess, not really, just, there's limited opportunities for where this shed could be placed, to keep its, I guess, you know, you put things in a shed to keep it safe, or, you know, nice, and when it fills with water, so the, a lot of the property has water areas. There's woods surrounding much of the property, and the grades on the site cause it, there's really limited space to actually, you know, nicely place the shed there. Is it substantial? No, it only 8.9 feet. It's not really that substantial of a size, of a amount, and it's also not observable from the roadside either. You actually have to kind of walk, walk around to see it there. Will the proposed area variance have an adverse effect on the environmental impacts in the, or the area? Nothing was identified here that there would be any kind of environmental changes. Is it self-created? Not, I mean, yes, it is self-created, because I guess everyone that does something causes it to be self-created, because if there was no shed, it wouldn't be created. But it was there when you guys, you know, bought the property, and it's always been there, and so, in a sense, you replaced what was there, not knowing. And so that's what I got there. And then any kind of conditions we have? We're going to say it's a 49-square-foot. The applicant will have to get a hold harmless agreement for the Town of Penfield, to be able to have your shed within the storm sore easement on the side. What else do we have here? You have to obtain a building permit, which is what process is brought to you here right now. And the applicant will have to follow all requirements from the Uniform Fire Prevention Building Code, Energy Conservation Construction Code, the Penfield Town Code, and any other applicable county, state, federal requirements. Wow, that's a lot. So make sure you follow all those rules as well, because it sounds like a lot.
We got to practice this, I think, at home a little bit before, yeah?
That's a lot of, that's a lot of, a lot of rules. So, but with that, I'll accept a second on this motion to move-
Second.
All right, second by Matt. Comments, questions? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, you're all set. Thank you, have a good night. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Andy, on to number three.
Thomas Luciano, 1758 Baird Road, Penfield, New York, 14526. Requests approval for an area variance under Section 250-14.3 of the code to allow an accessory storage building with less setback than required under Section 250-5.1-F12B of the code at 1758 Baird Road. The property is currently or formerly owned by Thomas A. Luciano, and is owned R-1-20, SBL number 109.04-1-38. This is application number 24Z-0009.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Can you say your name and your address for the record?
Tom Luciano. Address is 1758 Baird Road.
And you're looking to put a 400-square-foot, a 20-by-20 accessory building, 10 feet from the north side of your property, right?
That's correct.
And it's your understanding, and Andy can correct me if I'm wrong, that you need the variance, because while 400 square feet is permissible, if it's over 300 square feet, it has to be 50 feet from your lot line, correct?
Correct.
So you're looking for an 80% variance, so a 40-foot variance, correct?
Correct.
So typically, I would try and beat you up a little bit about reducing that variance, but you have a pretty unique lot, in that it changes, first of all, it's 100, it's about 100 feet, right?
Yeah, about 100 feet wide.
So you probably couldn't put anything 50 feet from the property line, but it also changes elevation, and it looks like, from the pictures, by the way, great pictures, I like the showing of where it's going to be, but you probably have some water moving through there as well, correct?
Yes, because, you know, the existing, like, terrain and layout of the property, as you can see on the diagram there, the water kind of just flows, you know, through the center of the yard.
And you're looking to put it at a high point within the yard, right?
That's correct.
Now, I saw in your application, it's going to be two levels, two floors?
Yes, that's what I applied for, yes.
What are you going to be using it for?
Just to store stuff that would normally be stored in my garage.
Okay.
Stuff for the yard, equipment. Also, one thing I'd like to add that wasn't in there, is that my, my existing garage, it's only a one-car garage, it's only 280 square feet, it's a one-car garage, and that garage sits 15 feet from the southern boundary of my property, so expanding the size of that garage would-
Be expensive.
...get a variance as well.
Okay. And so, I guess, cutting to the chase with my questions about what you're going to use it for, you're not going to use it for commercial purposes, correct?
No.
Okay. How about the color? Is it going to, is the color going to match the house?
Yep, so in the pictures that I provided, I applied for a permit to add, put an addition on my house, maybe seven or eight years ago, and this building would be sited in the same color and style as the existing house there on the screen.
What about lighting and utilities? Right, is there going to be outdoor lighting?
Yes, I plan on putting like an outdoor light on the outside, and also like some interior lights.
The outdoor light, is it going to have a knockdown, so that's not going to be bothering the neighbors?
That's correct.
Okay. Water, any water going to it, any other utilities?
No, I don't plan to put water in there.
Got you. I don't have any other questions.
Okay, anyone else on the board, questions, comments? Anyone in the audience care to speak on this application? Okay, let me check online, because I'm sure-
Probably just add something else.
Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
So I did obtain some signatures from a number of neighbors, including neighbors that ordered the northern, southern, and western boundaries of my house. They all approved, I have that with me here today.
Perfect.
Can you, can you hand that up to us?
Sure. Also, on that same piece of paper that I handed you, I also added a comp, kind of similar to what I was planning on doing at my house. So right down the street at eighteen forty Baird Road, I found a residence that's nineteen, a little over nineteen hundred square feet. It was built in nineteen forty. It sits on almost three quarters of an acre. That that location has an existing accessory building. It had an existing accessory building when a two-car garage was built, greater than three hundred feet and less than fifty feet from the property line. The house is similar to mine, which means that it was it's like it has a walkout basement. The garage sits below the roadway and is barely barely visible from the roadway. Design of the home, the layout of the property, and the location of the building that I'm requesting are consistent with this property. And it's only a short distance down the road. And I included photographs of the accessory building and the two-car garage that was added.
It's a very thorough application.
Okay. I'll say first. Yeah, I'd say I think we have no other comments, so let's move on to seeker, please.
I make a motion to declare this a type two action, requiring no further review.
Okay, I'll second. Any comments, questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and on to the merits.
So I'm going to make a motion to approve this with conditions. It will not have an undesirable change to the neighborhood. It's it's going to look nice. And as the applicant stated, there are others within the neighborhood that that are the same or similar in character, so it's not going to have a detrimental effect on the on the neighborhood. Could it be, I'm going to say it could not be the benefit could not be achieved by some other method. It really is a unique lot line with the with the path of the water. And this is this being a high point, just like the last application, it's it seems without some really heavy lifting that this probably couldn't be achieved any other way.
He moved it on the property, they would go from one variance to
Yeah, that's the other thing with, yeah, you're right, yeah. Yep. It is substantial. I mean, it's I think it's the very definition of substantial, but the other factors outweigh that. It's not going to have an adverse impact or effect on the physical or environmental neighborhood or district. And it's self-created because everything's self-created, but again, the other the other factors outweigh that. So I'm going to make a motion to approve and permit the applicant to build the four hundred square foot storage building on his property. The conditions and that he may do it with a forty-foot variance, so it can be ten feet from from the property line. The north property line, I should say. With the conditions that the applicant shall obtain a building permit for construction of the storage building from the Penfield Building and Zoning Department and pay the appropriate fee. That the applicant shall, upon completion of construction of the storage building, obtain a certificate of compliance from the building, Penfield Building and Zoning Department prior to the use and occupancy of the storage building. The building is not permitted to be used for commercial purposes, including but not limited to the leasing of space or storage of any vehicles, materials, or equipment associated with a commercial business, and shall be limited to the personal use of the resident of the property upon which the building is located. And the applicant shall comply with the applicable requirements of the New York State Uniform Fire Prevention and Building Code, the New York State Energy Conservation Construction Code, the Penfield Town Code, and any other applicable county, state, or federal requirements.
Second.
Okay, second by George. Any comments, questions? Nothing? Okay, I'll make a I guess I'll call the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, you're all set. Thank you. Okay, Andy, if we can have the next one.
Scott Van Hoover, forty Hilltop Drive, Penfield, New York, one four five two six. Request approval for an area variance under section two fifty dash fourteen point three of the code to allow an accessory storage building with less setback than required under section two fifty dash five point one dash F one of the code at forty Hilltop Drive. The property is currently or formerly owned by Scott and Beth Van Hoover and is zoned R dash one dash fifteen, SBL number one three nine point one one dash four dash sixty. This is application number twenty-four Z dash zero zero one zero.
Hi, can you state your name and address?
Yeah, Scott Van Hoover, forty Hilltop Drive.
A little bit of a theme tonight, I feel like. So read through your application, appreciate it. So the shed was built after the fact, realized that you needed variance.
Actually, I had a permit.
Okay.
Put it there, and I had read the rules wrong when I put it there. And then when they came to inspect it, said that that didn't meet the code, so I now I'm pursuing the variance for where it's placed.
Okay. You know, it's obviously within character. It's it's existing there. Is there anywhere else you could have moved it in in your property?
I mean, yes, but it would interfere. It's a very narrow property. It's only seventy feet wide, so moving out into the yard more would just cause more interference with enjoying the backyard and we have a patio there and we the kids played out in the yard and stuff and so it just would be kind of more in the way.
And there were some trees that you had noted in your application. You had also talked to some of your adjacent neighbors. I think you had three different neighbors who submitted letters of support for the placement of the shed. I didn't have a ton of questions. The application was pretty thorough. Do you know if you were to have to move it, do you know about how much it would cost to move?
No, but it's a it's an Amish-built shed, so it's very heavy. So I'd probably have to have some big equipment come in to move it because like it's on like four by six trusses.
Did they build that in place?
No, they brought it and then had one of those what do they call it, a mow, like they hook jacks to one side with wheels on it and then another forklift in front. And then he has a remote control and drove it back there and set it down.
Wow. So it would take a little work to move it?
Yeah.
We could assume at least we know at least six hundred dollars.
Somebody else did the homework for you. I didn't have any other questions, you guys.
It also is now stained the same color as the fence next to it, so it blends in.
It blends a little bit more.
Board, any other questions?
No, sir.
Okay, we do have one person, Dean, if you want to come up and if you had a comment. If you want, you can sit right here if you want, or, yeah. And just give your name and address for the record, please.
Dean Kaiser, forty-one Hilltop Drive, the opposite side of the street. I have no opposition to this structure.
Okay, excellent.
Thank you for coming and telling us.
Yeah, thank you.
That makes four adjacent neighbors who are
Now you got to wait until you get to twelve, though.
I got nervous when I heard that.
Perfect, perfect. Is there anyone else in the audience that cares to speak about this? Okay, let me look to see online. No one's calling about this one either.
Okay, well, let's do a motion for seeker first.
Please, yeah.
I make a motion for a type two action pursuant to seeker, no further review required.
Okay, I'll second. Any comments, questions? Nope, okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, on to the merits, please.
I'll make a motion to approve. The shed does not create any undesirable change of the neighborhood. It is consistent with other sheds in the area. You've had three, eh, four, four adjacent neighbors who have supported the placement. It's it's really difficult, you know, it technically could have probably been a little bit more in code, but probably still would have required some type of variance because of the trees and the patio placement. And it is a smaller lot where anywhere else you may have been a little bit more central to the the backyard. It is, I would call it a substantial request. The variance requested here is just shy of seventy percent of of what we would have to have put it in code. But it, again, is kind of tucked into the back corner. And it really doesn't have an adverse impact on the physical or environment, environmental conditions of the neighborhood. And again, much like everything else we've heard here, it is self-created, but that is to be expected, so. With that, I would make a motion to approve based on the conditions that the ten by twelve shed is approved with a variance of a six-foot, eight-inch variance from the minimum ten-foot setback required by the code. And that would be to the north side of the property line. That you will receive a certificate of compliance from the Penfield Building and Zoning Department and then that you will also comply with the applicable requirements of the New York State Uniform Fire Prevention and Building Code, the New York State Energy Conservation Construction Code, and the Penfield Town Code, and all other applicable county, state, and federal requirements.
Can I go second?
Second.
Second by Matt. Okay, any comments, questions? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
You're all set. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay, moving right along. Andy, can I get the next application, please?
Sure.
Stephen and Holly Hutchins, one sixty Havenshire Road, Rochester, New York, one four six two five. Request approval for an area variance under section two fifty dash fourteen point three of the code to allow a taller fence than permitted under section two fifty dash seven point one dash D one I I I of the code at one sixty Havenshire Road. The property is currently or formerly owned by Stephen and Holly Hutchins and is zoned R dash one dash twenty. This is SBL number one zero eight point one two dash one dash ten. This is application number twenty-four Z dash zero zero one one.
Perfect, thank you. Can I get your name and address for the record, please?
Steve Hutchins, one sixty Havenshire Road.
Holly Hutchins, one sixty Havenshire Road.
Excellent, thank you. So thorough application for what what I'm seeing here, you guys are looking to construct a fence around your property. One of the unique things about your property is you are on a corner. And so with being a corner, you get the double, the double experience of setbacks on fronts for both sides as opposed to any one of your neighbors on the other streets that only have to deal with the front. You have it on two sides because you technically have two fronts to your property now, according to the town code. And so what that does is you want to put a fence around your property, but now you're too close to the side. And so you could have it there, but it would only be three foot tall, so it would drop down to three foot. And that's not aesthetically what you're looking for. And it also is difficult to keep kids and things like that inside a three-foot fence. And so the six-foot fence is what is what you're looking for. One question on the directions right here. So you're looking at the Bella, the I think it's the Bella Vista side that needs that needs the variance. That has some natural buffering there already, correct, in terms of, you know, the lot? Can you talk about that a little bit in terms of what the edge of the road is there?
Correct, yeah, so you're seeing it here on the screen, Google Maps view. So there are some pine trees going along Bella Vista Drive, which is the backslash side yard of our of our property. The trees in this picture, I believe this is from a couple of years ago. They've since grown a little bit further and they're starting to thin out a little bit in terms of the privacy that they offer. And on top of also being having the right-of-way easement along the front and side, like you noted, we also have a drainage easement along the backside of our property as well. So we're surrounded on all four sides by easements. So the main reason, we do have a two-year-old and she loves to play outside, especially when the weather's nice, unlike today. So the main reason for the fence is for privacy and for security of our child.
Okay, talk about if in terms of these trees, where will the fence be located in relation to these
Yeah, so after submitting the application, I had Pacero Associates come out and do a survey of the property so that I knew exactly where the easement lines were. In doing that, I was able to tie a string line marking exactly where the right-of-way easement line. So roughly, if you're looking at this picture, it's about halfway between the pine trees along Bella Vista and then that there's an oak tree right behind there, so right in between the two of them.
Right, so in a sense, I'm pulling out of my driveway. The fence is not blocking my view any farther than the trees already were blocking it. So in a sense, you're inside of that space already, what's already a natural tree line, in a sense, or I guess a visual line that's blocked already.
Exactly.
Okay. Let's see. In terms of the colors of the fence, things like that, just a stockade fence, it's going to be a match to the house? What what are we doing for those kind of things, or have we thought about that yet?
It'll be a wood dog-eared picket fence. We're still undecided on stain color, but it'll be something that will be, you know, matching with the property as well.
Sure, okay.
Sorry, with the placement of it, the where will it stop? So will it stop, will it be flush with the the first pine tree there? Do you know what I'm saying? Like, if you go back to that one video, yeah.
Comes around like
How much closer to the will the driveway?
The driveway, is it going to be?
Oh, so the the fence will start, you're seeing the chimney right there?
Yes.
Come from the backside of the chimney, coming straight down to Bella Vista, and then turn the corner where the right-of-way easement.
Okay.
I have, right now, there's a string line for where the right-of-way is, and then I'm intending to build the fence about a foot to eighteen inches behind the right-of-way easement as well.
Okay.
Perfect. Let's see if anything else. So, yeah, so you did note that you're basically surrounded by right-of-ways and or easements for drainage, sewer. So it really limits in terms of your yard because now you want to stay inside those, or basically any time you want to put a fence around somewhere around the edge, you would have to get some kind of approval, whether it's in the drainage easements or the sewer easements for that. I think that's all I have. It's that we've covered already. Anyone else have questions on the board?
Real quick, looking at the diagram for the where the the fence will be placed. There is a chain link fence. Is that your fence or the neighbor's fence?
That's my neighbor's fence.
So is the distance between your wood fence, I mean, because you're property maintenance and stuff, are you going to be able to get back there with equipment, a mower?
So since actually submitting this application, after the the surveyors came out and marked the lines, we actually determined that I won't be putting the fence that close to the easement, the drainage easement along the north side of the property. It'll be about eight feet back from that.
Okay, so you
Just because we have trees back there as well, so just to avoid running into them. So I'll be able to get a mower, be able to get, you know, all of my landscaping tools back there to be able to keep up with the property.
So you'll be providing, Andy, with an updated drawing to show the actual locations of Okay, that's my only question, Andy.
Perfect, thank you.
Sorry.
No, no, no apologies needed. Any other questions? Anyone in the audience care to speak about this? Let's see if we have anyone online or waiting on hold. No, nobody for you guys either. Okay. So let's go ahead. If we're all set, let's go ahead and do seeker. So for this one, I'm going to move that this is a type two action pursuant to seeker, requiring no further review.
Second.
Second by Laura, thank you. Any comments, questions? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and then on to the merits of the application. I'm going to move to approve this application. When looking through the different things we have to see and in terms of to judge us by in terms of the negative impacts or to, you know, to the character of the neighborhood, I don't feel this is. The neighborhood already has, there's fences in your neighborhood already. I guess this property is unique in a sense that you're on a corner, you're encumbered by multiple restrictions and basically on every property on how or every side of your property in terms of how you can use your property. So that limits its use. There's already a natural, I'll call a natural buffer with a tree line going down, that you're staying inside of that, not exceeding beyond that, so you won't be encroaching farther than the trees are already on that. For that, could you have done some other way to, you know, that was more feasible to do this? I think yes. Yes, you could drop the fence down to three foot as it's coming around and then go back to six foot as it as it turns the corner again. Aesthetically, that's not something you're looking for, and it also doesn't help contain, you know, children playing inside or people, you know, or keep people from outside getting into your yard as well. Is it substantial? I'm going to say no, because it's not the entire fence, you know, it's it's only that portion along the street there, so it's not a huge area that's actually going to be encumbered by the variance. Will have an adverse impact on the physical environment. I said no, because nothing was identified that this fence would produce that. Was it self-created? I said yes. The act of building this is, you know, in a sense, in that location requires a variance. I guess what you didn't create is you didn't create where your house sits. You didn't put it on a corner. I mean, you happen to, you know, town codes stipulates that, so I guess yes and no, because town code also says you can't have it if you're on a corner. If you're at your neighbor's house right now, you'd build, put this in your backyard without an issue. Any kind of conditions? We're looking at just, you're going to be permitted to build a six-foot-tall stockade fence on the property. And then you'll have an updated plot map showing that so that we can actually have that on record as well, please. The portion of the fence located within twenty feet of Bella Vista Drive, right-of-way line is approved with a variance of three foot from the maximum three-foot height permitted by code, so it'll be six foot total. And then you'll need to make sure that your fence does not negatively impact any utilities. And the fence shall be continually maintained in accordance with the applicable requirements of the New York State Uniform Fire Prevention and Building Codes and the Town of Penfield Code. And with that, I'll take a second.
Second.
Second by George. Any comments, questions? No? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, have a great night.
Thank you.
And it looks like, Andy, that was our last application. So with that, I will move to have a to adjournments and we'll see you April eighteenth.